Okay, take the seats please. Take your seats please, we are beginning here. At this time, I'll call for Officer Miller with the Department of Insurance and Emergency to call for air possession to order the possibility.
I proclaim this commission meeting to be now in order.
Thanks, President. At this time, I'm calling Pastor Jimmy Casey, a pastor of Dunedin Baptist Church in Tel Aon to deliver her resignation. So Jimmy, appreciate you being here.
Ladies and gentlemen, Father, we're grateful for this day, we're grateful for this opportunity to be here in this meeting for the health and the strength that you've given us. We thank you for the blood and the strength that makes up Mayor and Board of these missions. We ask your blessings upon those homes and their families. We ask you to lead and direct them, Lord, in the greatest county that we know. We love you today, we honor you, and may they look to you for help and guidance in their every undertaking for this county to make it the best. We say this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Mr. David Orde, retired Air Force veteran, if he would please, if he can, please, to act. Thank you.
I give you to the flag of the United States of America and figure out for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all right, and see you. Thank you, thank you. At this time, we'll commence our roll call. Nineteen present. Nineteen present. Commissioner DeBord is working tonight at the base. He had called in and she had to be there tonight, she would have been here. And also, Mr. Mike Ray is sick, so we're short those two commissioners. But I appreciate everyone else being here. At this time, item number five will be approved of the agenda. And on the agenda, under new business, I'm going to add resolution, I want to add Resolution 2020 dash 29, which we have a copy of, which has to do with the aerospace. Do we have any other items regarding the agenda, any changes? Okay. I'll go ahead and remove, I'll have an intertwined motion to approve the amended agenda adding the...
If you're agreeing with his suggestion to add that, you can make a bridge motion, which being the foods, his suggestion change, without us having to. I do amend it since the bridge motion has been made.
Last queen, I might as well tell you something.
I'm still. About to simplify, I think, if you're making a motion and you accept his suggestion, part of that line goes.
Just not approved, how about agenda?
Yes, you ordered that.
I want a lead in the agenda.
Okay, now. Before you can leave, somebody has to make a motion to approve it again. That has to line up. Unless you won't like the motion, that means if you're line up, it's a real matter of order, if you're more than that.
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda. Will it be anything, will it be whatever you're telling me?
Kind of a random, put a few of them in front of each other.
Make that part of your plan, Mark.
Okay, I'm going to approve the agenda for two changes. I want to remove line H, Resolution 2020 dash 58, and add Resolution 2020 dash 29.
Excuse me a second, we're on agenda two. I think that was out on page eight.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the resolution created after the COVID-19.
Yeah, we're on page number two.
Only if you ever see what you have.
Two, number two, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, see, I only reference the wrong ones. So I want to remove line H, and then we're adding Resolution 2020 dash 29. If I may, a little judgment, a little bit of discussion, but the reason for that is because of the applicants would like to have some labor for due by the commission on this issue.
Okay, so that's a motion. Do I have a second to that motion as amended? Second by who? David.
No, I did, my motion was for the agenda before the amendment.
I'll second.
I stopped by second.
Okay, Commissioner Bellis then seconded the motion by, all right, okay, discussion? Discussion on the motion as amended.
If I may, just so everybody understands, if this amendment to the resolution has to be presented to the full legislative body exactly as presented to the planning commission. We've had like three or four suggestions, I think there's at least one of them issued that has to go back to the plan. We cannot deliberate this here, we cannot vote on those here. It must go back to the planning commission. The applicants request that, so I think it's a prudent thing to do at this time.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion as amended? Any other discussion? There being none, let's go, please. Voting on the amended agenda. Fourteen, yes? All right, the motion passes as amended, or the approved for the amended agenda. Okay, item number six will now be public comments, and on the public comments, only comments are allowed on items that are on the approved agenda. So we have three minutes for public comments on the amended, amended agenda on that motion. So at this time, all over the floor for any discussion from the public on the agenda as amended.
Mayor, could you please clarify for the public, while I just got taken off, because they're not allowed to speak about it?
Yes, the item just removed from the agenda on the amendment was Resolution H, which is Resolution 2020 dash 28, a resolution to amend the zoning resolution of Coffee County. So the Q1 issue is, has been deleted from the agenda. And then added to that now is the museum, about Resolution 2020, Act 29, which has been added to that agenda. So the Resolution 2020, thank you, Lynn, for that question, 2028, a resolution to amend the zoning resolution of Coffee County is off the table right now. Okay, so now we're all open the session of public comments on the revised approved agenda. Twenty minutes. Thank all the public for attending and for your consideration of items during your service, thank you. I'll thank Cindy Ray, who just played, she said, oh, you're right, so as you, it's already, and on every bill, two seconds up now, we have two, or four, so I know some people are listening now, and I don't play city or researching that past idea, if we make that work. Do we have any public comments on the agenda as approved? Chair, ready to ask Officer Bell?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I have an unusual request, as you know, Commissioner Ray is not with us because he tested positive for COVID, and he was listening in, I'm late. And he asked me this evening if he had a question, will he be allowed to text me to ask that? He realizes that he cannot vote, he doesn't have any, but since he is an active commissioner and he is this way, will he be allowed to have questions?
Yes, I will allow that. And we did have a seat, a seat has a opinion this morning, related to someone, a president today, voted by a total, and the seat has said, well, that's all I was holding there, and it's approved now, but yes, Mr. Ray, again, at some point, take away, takes a question. At this time, we'll apparently, there are no public comments, we'll move on to item number seven. Oh, excuse me, review and approval of amendments of the previous meeting, I motion to, except for your approval. Actually, seconded by, discussion, any discussion? As regarding the approval of amendments of the previous meeting, there being none, let's go, please. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Number eight, resolutions of the memorial, same thing, commendation. Eight A, Resolution 2020, 23. Resolution in honor and recognition of Martha Phillips Duron for her devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Martha Duron served as deputy clerk to the Coffee County Circuit Court from 1988 until 2020 for 32 years, whereas her tenure of service was characterized by dedication for her and his outstanding service in the people of Coffee County. Being resolved, therefore, the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Martha Duron for her outstanding service to Coffee County. Being further resolved, that Martha Phillips Duron received a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained, unfiled as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this 10th day of February 2020.
I want to thank Ms. Martha for her long service to her county. I appreciate her service and I don't want she's feared in that, but it's a privilege that we honor her. At this time, we have a motion to approve that resolution. Actually, seconded by Commissioner DeBord, any discussion? There being none, let's go, please. While you're voting, we'll think about Martha, that was interesting. She loves to have time for fellowship and for refreshments there in the conference room there in the second floor, the surgical works office, with that invitation to go in, out, take whatever that, and I want to thank her for her service. Thank you, okay, thank you.
Eight A, Resolution 2020, 24. And Diane Arbray wants to read this resolution, so.
Diane, thank you for being here to present this.
Thank you. Resolution 2020, 24, resolution of commendation of appreciation for service to the county. Whereas members of the Coffee County Board of Commissioners may wish to recognize outstanding accomplishments and our appreciation for services to the county by an elected official, county employee, and members of county boards and commissions. Now therefore, it bid resolved, the Coffee County Communications Center and Coffee County 911 Board, wish to express their appreciation to Whitney Howard, Andy Vaughn, Destiny Warren, Holly Slyper, Amanda Bailey, and Waverly Yurby, who were employees at the Coffee County 911 Center for going beyond the call of duty in the shooting, carjacking incident on Interstate 24 on September 13, 2020. They did an outstanding job answering numerous telephone calls and radio transmissions during this time of the incident. I have two of those employees here tonight, two couldn't come, and two are still working, and I would like to recognize Andy Vaughn and Destiny, if y'all understand, they were the two employees that were working at the very beginning of the call. And I just wanted to add, I don't know if y'all know how many calls we received, it was thousands of calls. That first hour was unbelievable, the second hour started slowing down a little, but the fourth hour, we were able to manage the calls. We were, they were taking calls so fast, they were answering the phone, finding out what was going on, if it was related to that call, putting them on hold, going to the next call, putting them on hold, going back. This went on, the first hour was just unbelievable how many calls were sent, and they just did an outstanding job. Of course, I had to listen to the recordings and the pad sheets and everything, and I'm telling y'all, they did an awesome job. I don't know how they done it, I don't know that I could have done it, but they went above and beyond, I mean, they worked together as a team, they did awesome, because they were overwhelmed, I mean, I mean, it was terrible. So I appreciate this. Destiny started on September 2nd, she was there on the 13th. She was amazing, and I will tell a little bit on her, she thought she'd be terrible. She said, I know I didn't know what to do or how to do it, so I listened, I let her listen to the recording, and I said, if I had known that you were brand new, I never would have known. I said, you were letting the people know that it was okay, the scene was safe, and you had help, I said, coming to them. That's all I knew this time, and she did it. So when I went to work Monday morning, I come in and I said, you're still here! You know, because that was very overwhelming to a brand new employee, but she's still there, you know, we knew it then, she was going to make a good decision. And all my employees got great, because it lasted all day and into the night, and that's why I say that she would have gone far about it, but I just want to thank y'all for this, because they deserve every bit of this, so thank you very much.
Thank all the people for their service that day that we'll never forget. At this time, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Actually, seconded by, discussion? Any discussion? Let's go, please. Thank you so much for your service, we salute you. I'm sure a page like that had you prepared, maybe trying, getting a little prepared for one day like that, why? Thank you, yes, thank you. Thank you again for your service.
Number nine, elections and accomplishments, nine A, Congress.
Now, motion to approve it? Motion by, seconded by, discussion? You're approving the notice. I thought me and Mike made that one, actually, we were two. See, quick on the draw. Any discussion? Approving the notice, let's go, please. I want to thank Officer Miller for being here, for getting signatures on your different documents, thank him for his services. And all our law enforcement committees here, thank you, yes, thank you.
Okay, nine B, Legislative Committee.
Okay, this is a Legislative Committee, we have a person that has resigned, and the fellow on the talk that said, reg, Mr. Lynn Seber, to take that position on the Standing Committee, Legislative Committee. At this time, we have a motion, I, voted by, seconded by, Mark. Any discussion? Discussion, together. Okay, okay, discussion? There being none, let's go, please. On the approval of Mr. Lynn Seber being on the Legislative Committee, and on the Standing Committee, there are five representatives, two commissioners representing Tel Aon, two representing rural part of the county, and one representing the District. Thank you, yes.
And that's the Judicial Commissioners.
On the Judicial Commissioners, we approved those appointments, or those regulations in November, and we have a law enforcement committee that reviewed this and approved these as well, and Mr. John Krueger have his application, he was interviewed, I think he has 38-year history of law enforcement in Fairfax County, Virginia, he's moved here, and for years, he was a school security officer, and he belongs to the system that county for 38 years' service, and he's moved here, and he made an application, and we're honored to have him serve, and as a full-time appointment, we have three full-time judicial commissioners in the county, he will be further, and then Mr. Jason Dyson, a part timer, he is a Tel Aon Fireman, and he's used for those 24 fire shifts, so Mr. Dyson will be the recommendation for the part-time position, so. Our advocate, seconded by, Mr. Halliburton, so any discussion? These are two appointments for the Judicial Commissioner's Board, which is extremely important in the county, being in discussion. There being none, let's go, please. Thank you, yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, nine E, Industrial Board.
Okay, now on the Industrial Board, we have nine members on that board, three from Manchester City, three from Tel Aon, three from rural part of the county, and we have an opening, Mr. Waverly Yurby was on the, the Tel Aon representative has moved, and so that created a position, and the, we had applications, the forms submitted to us, and the gave confirmation votes to the Tel Aon Caucus, and that, the recommendation is to approve Amanda Martin, one of the applicants, and Ms. Martin, she is the HR manager at Hertog Industries, and I went by, I visited with her, had a tour of the plant, I very appreciate her, and that is the recommendation from the Tel Aon Caucus on this Amanda Martin, so we have a motion, had a motion by, seconded by, thank you, a discussion. Very impressive, there being none, discussion, let's go, please. Now with her HR experience, whatever that gives, a very key knowledge, skill set representing the Industrial Board, and I appreciate her interest in serving, and that, thank you, yes, thank you.
Nine F, Purchasing. Nine E, 911 District Communication Board.
Okay, yeah, there were four of us there, I've asked through the new Manchester Mayor, Marilyn Howard, and she would agree to serve in the role, a place that Mr. Marilyn Norman was in, she's agreed to that, and I'm also, and it's a reappointment, Mr. Doug Martin, who had been appointed earlier, but called to work schedule, he missed some meetings, and the board has to re, well, submitting for reapproval, so I'm submitting those two to you, Mr. Doug Martin and Marilyn Howard, a motion by Scarlett, and seconded by, thank you, discussion?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
So if, if the judge has stopped making the meetings, will he be able to report?
Yes, he has, the board has changed their timeframe, so he can attend a week, so they suggested or they've taken action on that. That way, he said he could attend if the time schedule was changed. Thank you, that, any discussion? Other discussion, there being none, let's go, please. Okay, thank you.
Nine F, Purchasing Commission.
Okay, we now have a position, a label on the purchasing commission, Mr. Paul Cole, who we had appointed in January, who feel a position, has moved out of county, so with that in mind, I've asked Mr. Bob O'Brien, he was on the first position before, if he would agree to fill that position, and he is submitting Bob O'Brien's name to you for to be the fifth member on the purchasing vision, so I have a motion by, seconded by Harvey, on that motion, discussion? No discussion, let's go, please. Thank you, thank you, yes.
Number nine, finished business, there, there is a meeting, number 10, new business, A, Coffee County Vehicle Use Policy.
Thank you, Ross, and the, our big big committee has reviewed that and been working extensively on the buy or implementing a county government vehicle use policy, and they have a copy of that in front of you, so at this time, I'll, I have a motion, I have a second, I, I'm building to approve the vehicle use policy discussion. There being none, let's go, please. And I appreciate Mr. Hall working on that and the others, and I think we have a very good policy now that we need for people to use. And I think we have a very good policy now that we need for people to use. Nothing against, thank you.
T and D, school budget amendments.
I'm going to read the schools, they were here earlier, but we're concerned that there might be a crowding issue, so if you have questions, call me. So there's two for the school board. First one is 141, 2021-1. This is a transfer from regular instruction to regular instruction of contracted services. The amount is $46,000, has no effect on fund balance. Second one is 141, 2021-2. This one is rather lengthy, and there is a decrease in fund balance of $114,000, which brings their new fund balance, it's been $43,510. These were both presented to the budget and finance on October 20th.
Out of motion by Mr. Bryant, and second by Margaret Cunningham, to approve the school budget amendments. Discussion? I recognize, Commissioner Bell, this is a question of mine.
Mine is regarding the budget amendment for the highway and public works fund. I'm going to wait until she gets started.
Discussion on the school budget amendments. There are being announced, go please. Nothing against, thank you.
T and C, budget amendments.
Hold on just one second. Tell them where we're. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, now there are, there is one that needs to be voted separately. Do you want me to read them all separately?
Do you want her to, do you want to vote on them separately? Okay, we're voting on them separately.
Okay. Uh, the first one is the number 131, 2021-03. This is for the highway fund. Increase in state aid, 374,700. Increase capital outlay expenditures, state aid road projects, 374,700. There's no change, it's unbalanced.
A motion to approve, that is in. Motion by Amy Seck, by Nancy, discussion? Any discussion?
Do you have a question about the highway?
Mine is on the general time.
Okay, no discussion. Nothing against, thank you.
Okay, the next one's for the drug sign, 122, 2021-04. And, excuse me, increase in insurance recovery of $37,390. Decrease in unsigned fund balance, $92,610. Increase in expenditures for the purchase of five vehicles for the patrol division, $130,000. This is a decrease in fund balance. The new balance will be 476,526.
Again, this is all thoroughly reviewed by the budget finance committee.
Yes, this is pretty thorough, I'm going to refer, sorry.
Motion by Margaret, second by Ms. Gordon, to approve, discussion? There are being announced, go please. Pretty important, we have good functioning safety, safety people for law enforcement,
Next one is for the general fund, 101, 2021-05. Decrease in unsigned fund balance of $135,000. Increase in rural fire protection contributions to the five old fire departments of $25,000 each. Increase of $10,000 to Coffee County Rescue Squad. This is a one-time additional appropriation. It was approved on October 20th, 2020, at budget and finance. A new revised estimated fund balance will be 4,285,459.
Thank you. A motion to approve, a motion by Nancy, second by Mr. Gordon, discussion? Okay, care recognizes, Ms. Bell?
I just have a question, I was looking over this, and I've just been made aware that there is someone here from the Coffee County Rescue Squad who came out here. So I noticed that we gave $25,000 to all of the fire departments, which is well deserved, but then also noticed that the volunteer squad only got $10,000. And they don't get any funding unless they raise this money primarily themselves, and they go out just as much as anybody else. So I was just wondering, why do we only gave them $10,000 for all the work that they do, and they volunteer for this?
Certainly, pretty much all the work that was reviewed and specifically provided in finance, and that was just the way the motion worked out, or the funding.
But is there a reason why?
Just what worked out. You can always request another rule to, to increase that.
I just want to give you some of the history of the other, of the bottom structure of all the discussion we had. One of the things is that, we had some of our, actually, from, for, 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 everything this year. They have some very specific needs for, for, here, across, that's why we usually, the Rescue Squad are actually not approached, probably they weren't aware, so they look, they're fault. But we followed that, and we would think about, our, 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 and it's all been, 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 been,[1226.93] Nothing else, okay? Now, we're going to take a motion to approve this budget limit. Okay? A motion by... voted by David, it's set by Tom. Discussion on approving this budget limit on this 26,000 dollar amount. You know, special, let's go, please. Not as she mentioned, this would be, uh, uh, funding for this due person that would have been trained as far as it's legal, and, uh, that would be in six months. This conversation provided training for the person for six months. Pardon? Nothing else, thank you.
Resolution 10D, resolution 2020-25, resolution authorizing the dates of January 12th, March 9th, April 13th, May 11th, June 8th, June 22nd, July 13th, September 14th, and November 9th as the appointed meeting dates of the Coffee County Commission for the year 2021.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve, motion by Ellen, and set by Tom. Discussion. Improving commission meeting date connection. No discussion, let's go, please. Thank you.
10A, resolution 2020-26, resolution accepting the Coffee County Hazard Minigation Plan.
This is ruled over so many years, it's a procedure we had to go through, and that was reviewed by the appropriate committee. Now the motion to approve. Voted by David, set by Tom. Discussion. There being none, let's go, please. I'm glad Thomas is here, and I'm glad Mrs. Finn. I'm glad everyone's here. Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution 10F, resolution 2020-27, resolution establishing an updated occupational safety and health program plan, divided rules and regulation, and provide for safety director and implementation of such program.
Again, that was reviewed earlier, that's, uh, over several years, and, uh, over five years. Thank you, Ellen. And, uh, that was reviewed by the appropriate committee. Now vote, now vote by you, and set by action. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please. Thank you.
10G, Coffee Conference Center agreement.
Okay, at this time I'll recall our county attorney, he was not there, has this been reviewed, discussed, been discussed, and this time I'll let Paul give the lay claim.
And, uh, Paul, I've got the very government, yes, you're talking about the board, Paul, I said, yes, we have, we're here. Uh, we talked about this explicitly in the, in the meeting last night. I have added in the language that I talked about, uh, that I spoke to Mr. Paul.
We go closer, you might think.
Okay. The language, uh, wasn't there, I didn't add anything, uh, so we can hear the emphasis. It makes a lot better, turn things forward. We have inserted, uh, into capital improvement, uh, the phrase to the real estate, so now it's capital improved, shall be those improved individually or collectively to the real estate, which costs $25,000 or more. That's to clarify that you would be helping about part of your claims and that, and just to real estate. The other thing that we had pressed was whether or not the question came up, Phil. The question whether or not to go ahead and prove this arrangement more to hold, to try again, to can and personal property, uh, in regards to bad reference to real property, we died, we did flows. And the issue is going to be quite, quite complicated in that cabinet. If we alternative is, we'll go back on this. I suppose Mr. Paul, ask his opinion of whether or not it is real or rare. If we add, if we held out to try to go on personal property, he could say one way or another, whether it will be or not. He would think he would, that that was very risky, and we are sure all kinds of detail, which will aid in the business problems. And so, as my information, and that might have been previously, is that probably we should present it, uh, as is, with that language that got in about the very real problems. So without seeking to, uh, personal property, as I think, probably means that we talk about problems, that they should be wired by the, uh, established, or the burning stuff, that all were in that, 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 that's, and so it needs to be presented or vote tonight, and it does have to be this march or presented for vote tonight. And, uh, in the past, and then when I was, uh, mayor, and it's, uh, with every sign, and saying, uh, the city company would be trying to, and will be included and will be out, uh, to be, uh, will take this new primary to take place. If it fails tonight, then we'll have to go back to the city, and try to talk about the personal property. And we, I get that number for the end of the year, so, and that, that's kind of a choice. And I know I'm not speaking this clearly with my, so anybody that I'm saying what I'm saying, or anything is unclear, go ahead, say that, and I apologize. Thank you for the words, last word, then. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, put your vote, vote. Oh, discussion, now, let me get one of those.
They have motioned. Okay, motion by, uh, I'm going to give a second, but, uh, hard to approve the agreement as presented. Is this discussion? Go.
So, the only thing that I want to say about it is, um, should we have an end date for the agreement? So, and then the county has an opportunity after so much time to go back and make sure it works for them, versus just having it where as long as it's operated, it can go on forever.
What is, because, if, if the agreement is mailed out by March, it's that.
So what date does it end?
It's not a date, but as long, certain levels.
My point is, is should the county have an opportunity after a certain period of time to make sure this is working for them?
I, that wasn't what was negotiating by anybody, that, that, I, I mean, it's just a question.
I know, why is it, well, you see, with ready, it'd be function, I'll say, to remind, right? I mean, but at the end of the time, don't we get ourselves into some pretty awful deals because we don't have another point to change our mind? I mean, are we going to set this up so as long as they convince us like the museum, that it's being ran for certain things, that we don't have a date that we can talk about it?
The, the document, matter of fact, and I thought Gerald is, was working, working, and most of it, he got the spell out in Warren County, in operation, and the idea behind it was, it's a good thing to have so long as it's not sucking money out of county budget all the time. And, uh, and as long as the, the city were willing to keep it flowing, that was a good thing. I, I hadn't heard any perspective about wanting to close it now per se. Uh, it was just one to eliminate the drain, and I think it's generally think it'd be a good thing for the public to have as long as, as long as it's not, there's such a drain on the county's budget. And that's what we were seeking to do, and like, to continue to operate now. And, and, of course, everybody's got to vote, Gerald, vote on it, but it's been strong sentiment expressed in this commission for a long period of time, that we needed to do something like this to eliminate that drain, and you gotta, you gotta make some decisions, you gotta, I, I guess, you know, we gotta decide how much we want to terminate that drain, or how much money we want to live with, or what, what, what did I say yet?
Mr. Bell, this is, you know, the.
So, Commissioner Miller, we asked this the other night, if there were any other debt obligations on this, and so I contacted Marianna, and I found out that, yes, we still owe another $190,000 that's due in June. So my question is, because there is no mention in here, do we still have to pay that, or are they absorbing that? We don't owe anything, because it's not in June.
We always owed the $190,000 regardless. It has nothing to do with the, uh, city. We still owe that, that was an original agreement.
We're on bond, we owe that.
We owe that, the last tag of, out of your bond.
True, but the bond also included, I think, part of a part or something, but if it's, if it's money that we owe, whether it's a bond or it's a debt, it just seems like, we're not getting out of this stock screen. We're still gonna have to pay $190,000.
This is, uh, the highest payment on the last tag of the bond.
Yeah, it's, it's not additional calls to the county. That's something we already owe, and we're not getting out of it, and we're not, uh, being done differently, so. That was an obligation that, uh, when we signed those bonds, we committed to. It has nothing to do with the city or the agreement.
But we know it's added, if the conference center closes 10 years ago, we owe that bond, like, that was.
Exactly, I understand that, but in June of 2021, we're gonna be out of this completely anyway.
No, we're gonna be out, hopefully, December the 31st.
That's what I'm trying to do.
And that's what this is all about. So, uh, Joey, we had that discussion with the, uh, small committee, that we tried to work this all together about an end date, and basically, uh, the other part of the city said they would not agree to that. So, that's one reason it's not in there.
Ling.
See, I just wanted to come in on that, so as far as end date, whether it's working force, there is nothing to work for, so if we've got that, we need the property, that's it. Not sharing the drug, not sharing the debt, not sharing the operation. The only thing an end date will allow, will allow us, we won't finish shutting down no progress, there's no way that we're, I would agree. If, if it closes, we did our best back out of it, I believe we did, and that's the deal with it.
We discussed all that, we talked about 10 to 8 years, various things, and they finally decided that, uh, they were not going to set an date. Uh, let's just have to let it go.
I would like to thank Jim for all their research and review hours they put in this. Jim, you got anything to, what you want to, okay. Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Hoffman for the next vote, excuse me.
So, I'm gonna have, just want to be clear, I'm not opposed to this, okay? I think it's what everybody's been asking for. I just think that you have to cover yourself so that you get other looking at this. I mean, I don't understand what's wrong with the county saying that in 10 years, I'll have to talk about the property out. I, I can't reply if you figure that out. And it's not about what who's running it. If they're gonna run it, they're gonna be running it in 10 years or 20 years. It's our property as a county, you decide what happens. We're not out to owe more money if it closes than if it stays open. We're still gonna pay the same amount of money either way. So it's not like we're over a barrel that we have to make a deal right.
I guess I don't see it quite that way, because if we have an agreement, we don't pay any more money. If we do have an agreement, then we're not paying any more money. That's the reason for the agreement. And if the city decides at some point that they don't want to, uh, do that anymore, then we will both sit down and sell. But we will have no additional, uh, money in that if we just close this and say, we keep working out an agreement on this, then we will be paying more money until we have it, so. We can close it up to a point, we'll, we'll still owe, uh, bills. Such as, uh, the cost of having the place. Uh, we'll probably have to keep some utilities in there, you can't let them freeze, and various things. We'll be paying more, uh, on the insurance. It may take us a year or two or whatever, drive some.
Is split with the city? Is all those costs split with the city?
They are currently being split, split with that, yes. That's the agreement.
If it's closed, they'll be split with it too, right?
If we're closed, we will split, yes.
So we have all of this in writing from the city?
We all have what, or are you talking about?
Whatever you have agreed upon that we're signing tonight, or are voting on tonight.
That, that is it. Basically, what we ended up with, we don't have to pay any more money for anything. And that was the agreement, basically, it was worked out.
Mr. Braden.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, just to go over, page two, I, I appreciate what Paul was saying, and I, I understand, I think, what he's saying, and, uh, I don't need, uh, need to make it to do that, but it looks like with time being, page two, uh, up here, where it talks about disagreement shall remain in effect for as long as the city PBA, or any contractor the city PBA operates, conference center as defined below. And so, in this agreement, it's setting out, looks like to me, a set of criteria that is, determines whether or not that facility is operational. And, uh, it lays out, uh, down below, as you can see, as far as events number, events review, even related to attendance, and it's laying out a set of criteria that defines and determines whether or not that facility is considered as operational. And I can think, and Mr. Husky can elaborate on this, but it looks like to me, that's laying out and defining, you know, a potential end date for disagreement, if those, uh, uh, criteria are not made up to operate, you know, conference center.
And, and part of the idea behind that, because I thought that was, part of, well, uh, part of the reason for all that being put in there is so we do not be in the posture of this issue for the conference center, like we were with the museum, where there was no environmental criteria. If there's the absence of that, and that affects the property, the inclusion that is here, so that it's least, you can see it, respect it. And, and, and part of the matter of two, commission only, most of them are beneficial for, for the city in some way, they're not what they're. You know, if, if it turns out where it, that, it may not bring any revenue to them, but to them generate otherwise good tax and so forth, and that, and that, and they'll close it as long as it's, it's there, it's not a claim on the, I mean, it's, it's beneficial in that. Okay, but Brian had to do what, never had to.
Joe.
So, this will just be my last comment. I'm sure when the museum was put together, that was all signed with everybody, the best intentions at that time were had. Here we are today, over a few years later, having to sue to get the property back. And I was thinking that set us up, and I'm saying, I won't see it, a lot of us won't see it, somebody's gonna see it. And I just think it would be a lot easier if there was a date, whatever we choose, so that at least it ends, get to have a conversation, that's it.
The only problem was, we didn't have a choice. We discussed it, we asked for it, they said no, and we can either have the agreement or not have it, is what it goes. So, we can vote our own plan out over that one thing, if that's what we wanted.
Okay. Thank you for your discussion, this time it's called the vote.
I can't sign. I wanna get ready, but I don't like.
Got, 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 got it. Both of the way, thanks, yeah.
Well, I can get out both ways, as I said, but I wanna get ready. Me, because I just feel like, um, I'd be pressured to make a vote now, seeing him for one night.
Call the vote. Thank you. Nothing, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, 10A, resolution 2020-29, resolution approving the granting of an easement on a small portion of the museum property to Blue Ocean G.P. for utilization as a detention and retention pond with certain restrictions, and authorizing the mayor and county clerk to execute such easement.
I'll ask county attorney, make some comments.
Last night, here, uh, here in Eric, very fine session, we, we discussed this, and then, uh, maybe people brought up that, that was wanting to go through a meeting, review the capital out of play, we've got to do this once, we've got it now. And also, since last night, I added, if you're listening, the second, page two, had the, uh, if this is identical as it was last night, except I added, uh, an extra condition of, say, uh, obligations on the city. That there are power raise, whereas the conditions on which the county would grant this easement to Blue Lake, to Blue, or call it Blue Lake, blue ocean, G.P., and any other easement that is granted, would include the provision implied of the purchaser, purchaser of the museum property from the county would likewise do utilize this portion of the museum property as a detention, detention pond, pond for whatever filter today is that we saw the property. That was actually in there before, I had it, so it gets to that last night. And it further provides that Blue Ocean G.P. and any purchase or, meaning portion of the museum property that utilize easement for the other purposes, will be responsible to say, they, all of the county office, they allow building in relation to this. That will be the conditions, uh, granting the easement to Blue Ocean and the easement that you like, Grant, you got it, purposes to museum property. And, uh, and then we will, we, and the easement that will be drawn for them or anyone else, would have those conditions in, because they have to be, because that's what's authorized, obviously.
Okay, I want you to approve the resolution as predicted, that vote, that's had to go, second by, okay?
So, on this one here, the folks who already have a hotel right there beside this piece of property has contacted me today, and they're interested in also, uh, purchasing this land from the county. And I, we, I don't know how we put it in touch with each other, but they wouldn't be interested in it if this is approved. Evidently, they are in the middle of this, with the city, as far as not having enough party, they're opposed to it, but I think that before we give away any piece of property, we should fully let who might be interested in it, uh, based on, on the whole property, not just parts of it.
Well, I don't, yeah, I can't, uh, one of the things we were concerned about, and I, I think this was mentioned, especially last night, I'm not sure, but I think it was one of the things we were concerned about when we learned what the museum had done in relation to it. Of course, they granted authority, granted right, they didn't have the right to, because they didn't own it. But the thing, the concern was, if there was easement there, would it induce benefits of the other property? And of course, we were particularly concerned, because in regard to Chief of Labor, because we understood already that they were creating the interest in that front property. And we've since had meeting, mayor and myself, representative of Chief of Labor, representative of Blue Ocean was there, and, and, and attorney or, uh, agent of service of the museum was there, and Chief of Labor, and, because we wanted to know, because we didn't want to do anything in terms of that, and in actuality, uh, they had no problem with it, and I liked the idea, I would say that would be great, because they, they would have to have a intention area too, if they could use the same one, which, which blew up and said, we might, and that is additional, so it actually serves as, as an incentive, because you've already got a, or, and then it would probably end up being divided into two remaining property, properties, two tracts. And so that'd be two, two other tracts that constitutionally, now property, that would be benefited by the, the parking area that would be used in by Blue, Blue Ocean, and the purchases of the museum property. So it, it actually appeared from the, I was really pleased to get the response from Chief of Labor, because it came over to, that was a good thing, because that's, that's solved the problem effectively. And I would anticipate that whoever bought the bracket in between would have the same kind of question.
Uh, can you recognize this, Commissioner? Yeah, so I have a question for Mr. Hoffman. Can you clarify a little bit the difference between giving an easement to the property and selling the property? And if we were to give this easement, how, how do you review the player? If it's necessary, which is the way I do it. I need to understand my answer, because Joey had asked, before we give something away, my question is, are we actually giving something away here? Is this easement, how does that affect, actually, selling the property away from them? Or can it even be on the, uh, system?
I, if we're trying to get that easement, they're going to need it financially, so it's there, but it would still serve as these other two properties. Uh, and, uh, and, 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 and we, and, and you could say, you could, I guess you could put it right, I own it, probably, after we, well, after they build, and if we sold the other two tracts, after we had the property, I think it probably was, that, that property the county just could pay three of it, but it, and we can seek some money from them if we wanted, but, uh, they're already committed under the, the agreement with the museum, pay the certain amount of lease period, and it was mentioned last night, we'll, we're gonna pay it, that can just go in. pay them, that can just go into the, the file, that could go into the business of the museum.
I would worry about money on our end, because Joey said we're not doing any break fees, so, uh, that's what I'm trying to be saying.
Oh, we're gonna break.
Well, I mean, I guess the other question I have is, has the city approved the hotels project?
They're just waiting, I think that, it's my understanding, the only thing remaining is that they need a detention pond, and they don't have that, and they're not gonna get approved until they get it.
Number that from Manchester, man.
Yeah, they were actually going, they were actually going in for the, the, uh, Manchester planning to get their final approval, just a few days after I learned about the transaction the museum had made, and I was able to get in touch with, made contact with, uh, the representative of Blue Ocean the very day of the meeting of the city, and, and based on the realization that they, they were not aware that the museum had a reversion in their deed, that they didn't have rights to pay what they could pay, and so they pulled from the planning permission that, uh, they asked to be removed until they could work out and get a, get a place for a detention pond, so they were ready to go in there, and the reason I was pushing to get this back on, voting on tonight, because they're setting ready to start building. When they, me and the mayor and the, and Chief Collet and several about a month or so back, they, they were ready to break ground and were planning on starting once, once they could get this, then they go through, get there, build this permit and start building. And that is the reason for pushing back on, getting all the tenants starting to be considered. And of course, if you don't want to do it, because the vote is down, at least they'll vote.
I believe this is the vote.
Okay, so I'm just needing additional clarification. So, what we're doing is, you're wanting to go ahead and grant an easement to a hotel that's already been approved to go there, but they have to have this retention pond to actually start. So, if they have to have that, that means that they're gonna dig, they're gonna make it, which would then make any other bidders for that property, especially the one that Commissioner Hawes has mentioned, they don't want it if there's a retention pond. So, we've cut our fingers off to say, the only people we can now sell it to is the people that you're maybe negotiating with, which is Chief Collet. So, we could have had maybe two bidders, and now we only have one.
We're not actually gonna be negotiating, we're going to, although at the meeting, we're going to have to have a COB on, on the property, through, and, and that's, it's, it's gonna be a sale, but it's gonna be through, all probability, it's through COBs with a minimum figure or out of the fee, so, but we found out from meeting with them that that's not a negative, it's really a plus, because anybody going there will probably need that, and it would be available without utilizing the property at first. That is what we were concerned about, when we learned about it, what the museum has done, and it might end up a rest of the property, but it doesn't seem like they do that now. I didn't, maybe I didn't hear what the economist said, or Commissioner Hawes said, I didn't, I didn't hear the part about, and somebody told me that they didn't want there to be a retention.
That's correct, and they would like a chance to at least talk to us about it, uh, get a notice, it would be a major time, so when I text the lady, whatever, they can't make it, but they're gonna talk about it, they're willing to purchase that land, the whole platform.
With the one third?
And I'll be glad to, uh, if you can contact me and information when we get done.
Well, I would do that, but we're still, when we sell this property, we can't, I, I bring this through, through the state, the seat of Ashley, we're going to have to do one of two things, have a public auction or a sealed bid, and I think that's, and I have, and it doesn't say anything statute without observing the figure of minimum bid, but I, I thought that'd be always safe, because we don't want to be set up thinking there's a commission, or to find out if there really only one, and you get a little bid, and so I confirm that we can do it, and they researched, so they're racing, uh, and there's no restriction on it, a minimum on the bid, and we're also going to look with them about maybe even pulling the right to, to throw out the property. We don't know if that'll be a decision, the commission will have to, I have to check that part out, but it's not gonna be a negotiated sale or something, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a sometimes auction, either public auction or sealed bid.
I'd like to point out the retention pond, when civil engineers, or a drawn-up site plan score, a construction project like that, retention pond is actually sized to take care of the parking lot that creates the runoff, so you can't say that the next person that buys or develops the lot next to it can use the same retention pond, because they can't, without enlarging it, so I, I don't see how that could possibly be a plus, but it would have to be enlarged, which would take that, which would cost a little bit of that lot, so I just wanted to make that. Might as well speak and finish up this corner. An old timer told me, and that really dates me, if I'm calling him an old timer, said you better hurry up, you're gonna need more bridge, so I don't know if that's old true to hear or not, but it sounds like this guy, Mr. Hawes, has talked about this, potential prospect is interested, I want to clarify, which Bob's can respond, in the entire five acres, not this, this is a detention pond here.
That's correct.
Yeah, this one clarified, that they're interested in the entire five plus, or five acres?
Four thirds.
So, I want to try to summarize, but it sounds like the issue is first denied. Uh, it sounds like, feel like we officially have all this property that we can sell, and we're gonna want to do that, so the question is, are we gonna sell it with an easement or are we gonna sell it without? Uh, you know, they, they should, they're, they're testing projects right now, typically their properties, whether that's important to us now or not, but to me, it's just a matter of how we want to sell it, whether we do it without. I don't know about that yet.
Yeah, that's not a decision, they may, I'm just trying to put the other stuff.
Any more discussion? Okay. Moving on to the resolution, only museum, twenty, twenty-nine, uh, let's go, please. Six yes, well, no, so the resolution does not pass.
Report sustaining case, but it can't end.
We have a vote for that now, we'll wait the first, the third, uh, Tuesday, Tuesday, I said, right, first, the third Tuesday, five o'clock, and we'll try and be here in the full commission room, so, it's, it's important, I want to sit early, we might need, might need to come and join us, or give us some input, so I have no further call for the next one.
Legislative committee?
We appointed Mr. Ray as the new chairman of legislative, which I know he's not here, but I will appoint him, but we don't really have anything for the next one.
You have a vote for my creation? Can I go out, Mike?
We may, uh, last Thursday, I think November, we discussed, ladies mayor, depending about facilities, things, right, Dr. Gill, uh, we regret to hear you possibly draw out, get a drawing, a drawing for an, we don't have a spot for it, but to get something started for possibly, trying to figure out this, and control involved with it, but, uh, we also totally regretted, uh, Mr. Gill, to take quotes to take care of, out of the new jail, got the, the, all the dams, mounts are dumping water, and are dammed by the sidewalk, so we're gonna take quotes to get, get that water, run those sidewalks, and to the, um, the manholes and all of that to take care of it. Also, we were looking at carpet replacement, a lot of the buildings, I'm thinking, we decided, you know, we got the train deal going on, there's gonna be workers coming in to replace the light switch, water filters, AC units, all of that, and why, I just, we felt like it'd be, it'd just be a mess, with most of any floor cover, until all of this was over with, and the train going through for us right now. Could, of course, a house, almost anybody's been up on the square and looked up, and really those guys are here, and they've done a great job, I mean, uh, we had, at the jail, we got these, uh, door sensors, things where they, in the control towers, whatever you call it, the inmates sell doors, have electronic devices, that lets the, the officer in charge know that the door is open or unlocked, and the guys, our guests out there, like the master of those sensors and tearing nuts, we actually have, had to order, uh, a hundred and ten new sensors for that, uh, I think, but finance actually did approve that for the sheriff, and the trains, oh, the train here, you see all these guys riding around in these, uh, window tenting cars, the tents again, cars, you know, the lot of way that, but we're looking at a window tent for these buildings, and we had two to choose from, one was the chrome tent, that you could not see through, the other one was the light tent, and, uh, I think the mayor and his staff decided, we all, the lighter tent would be there, because it's not in favor of the tenant, but I would add more security to the window doors, so we decided to go with the light tent, and also, it does not add anything to the hall, it's the way we live, so that's what we did. And, of course, the Arrowhead airspace, the museum, uh, subject, we discussed, our attorney is pretty much brought the subject back on track, and, uh, that was pretty much good at that point, that's all I got.
Thing is, I would mention to my mayor, I quickly, that we did have a meeting with training today, and I asked them as to their estimate, which they have this property, and they said, whether the meeting, they hope to have it all done by the, remember, do you want to hear that?
Okay, I, I, I just dropped my name, but, uh, I go through these meetings, that have, I've played excellently by my secretary, Rosemary Craft, she does a very good job with it.
Okay, law enforcement?
Uh, I guess I'll talk, we met last Thursday, a special meeting, so we could get the judicial commission, which they have, so that was our meeting for the month, we'll meet, uh, second, Thursday, Texas.
And we're led aside and put down.
You have any statements and announcements?
Yes, I would just, uh, want everybody to realize what tomorrow is, tomorrow is veterans day.
Yes.
So, I got my Air Force brother across the aisle over here, Mr. Crockett, if there's any other veterans in the audience, if you could raise your hand, we want to recognize you, appreciate your service.
Yes.
And Mayor, if you could just kind of outline for us, what is the city of Manchester County doing tomorrow for benefits?
Weather. We have great, nice, nice air, and veterans, we have a big, great, nice, sad.
Okay, so, uh, there will be events on the square then tomorrow?
No, no, not at all.
I apologize, I missed that, I didn't think of those.
There's a good president, yeah. You, Mayor, you're president, Mayor, you're eighty-something, uh, uh, quotes are in break, I think.
There will be a event on the one more, I'd like you to do that, it's gonna be on the, it's there at the railroad track, I think there's a, there's a veteran memorial there, and I believe it's guys, right, around the block, whatever, I think it's around the block. Yeah, they're actually having a, kind of a parade of veterans from nine till then, through asphalt schools, uh, try to let the kids have a chance to make the, eleven o'clock home there, there will be a service.
Thank you, they mentioned that.
Let me add something. We got, we have a veteran in tow, one of the, not even the whole, I was mentioning that, he just turned a hundred and one, uh, he was, he was a hero, world hero in Korea, and, uh, the world was, world was, really, world, in, in, uh, he, he wounded twenty-five times, has personally broken hearts, he has medals from just like every country, and a book was in Korea was written about him, and he has medals from everywhere, from the United States, France, and everywhere, and he's just an awesome man, in particular, some of these, who had searched, uh, we had a little drive up, raised one, one hundred and one first birthday, and, uh, he can also, he can also judge. Joe, go. Anyway, uh, anyway, uh, you know, yeah, 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 yeah.
I like to get, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Madoff was saying about the, uh, go back to like the, uh, helping county Christian squad, uh, they have a fire that fills out, a labor fills out, you guys can, uh, help their fundraising, I said that, they survive by doing, they, they keep their, blow the water, you know, and I just want to feel the good rest, and see if that's out in front, people will announce, so they volunteer, put their life in the fire too, I appreciate it.
His name is Tom Sweeney.
Thank you, I'll mention that, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd like to, I don't want to embarrass him, because I wish Officer Bill would stand up, and this, we've been hearing about the blue uniform, he would model, he could do black, you know, or, hold your hat up, hold your hat up, I like that, he, uh, he told me earlier, he said, yeah, I like the hat, he said, thanks for getting rid of it when this hat comes off, we appreciate your service.
Appreciate you for your service, it's. Any other statements or announcements?
Good chairman, I like all of us, you know, keeping the prayers, I know the builders getting ready to have some surgery, and, uh, I like to keep him in the office, Jackie, I would, had some health issues, but certainly, thank you, Jack, and, uh, keeping the prayers, and any others, I think the farmers have a few issues, and, uh, you know, just keep all the three of these, uh, fellow commissioners in the prayers and all.
And also, Commissioner Ray as well.
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Thank all of you for your service, I would, and then motion to adjourn. Okay, all of our, all of our, uh, thank you, thank you.